All right, Mr. Hayes, let's get moving.
I'd like to reconvene our meeting. I apologize for the delay, but we had a little emergency come up that has been addressed, so at this time we will return to our agenda. I think the next item on the agenda was item N. Sole Source NCDPI Publications Formative Instruction and Assessment Task Publications Appendix T. Dawn Brinson.
Request that the Board approve the sole source for the NCDPI publication of Formative Instruction and Assessment Tasks Publications.
Move for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item O. Sole Source TeachScape, vices renewal appendix U. Dawn Brinson.
Request that the Board approve the sole source TeachScape renewal.
Move for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item P. 2012-2013 End of Year Amendment Resolution Appendix V. Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you. I request the Board approve this amendment to allow us to do the adjustments to -- for state budget revisions that are received after this meeting.
Move for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item Q. 2013-2014 Interim Budget Resolution Appendix W. Mary Hazel Small.
This resolution will allow us to continue operations into the new year until the budget is formally adopted.
Move for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item R. Other Restricted Revenue Resolution Appendix X. Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you. This is a new one. This is to -- back in 2010, you created the Other Restricted Revenue Fund, and government accounting standards are requiring the Board to clearly define how all the monies received into that fund will be budgeted, and so this resolution defines that on a continuing basis.
Move for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item, uh, let's see, item S. 2013-2014 Workers' Compensation Policy Appendix Y. Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you. This agreement is for our workers' compensation coverage for next year. We're switching providers because our previous provider is no longer providing this coverage for school systems in North Carolina, so we're recommending renewal with the North Carolina School Boards Trust.
Move for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions?
Only comment is that it costs $610,000, which is a lot of money.
It is quite a bit of money, and there were -- this is 130,000 more than last year, but it is very far below many of the other bids. So this is an area that's continuing -- the costs are continuing to go up.
Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is approved. Item T. Personnel Recommended for Continued Employment Not Eligible for Tenure Appendix V. Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recommend that the Board has approved the personnel recommended for tenure employment. These are probationary teachers who are not in their tenure track year.
Move for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item U. Renewal of Lease Between Community Development Institute, CDI, Head Start, and New Hanover County Board of Education Appendix AA. Mr. Hance.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chairman requested the Board approve the lease for Johnson and Virgo for CDI for this coming year.
Move for approval?
Second.
Question. Have a question.
Ahead.
Uh, it includes Johnson and Virgo. Do you know exactly what -- I mean, I have a hard time grasping how they -- why they need both schools. I do realize they're close proximity to each other as the information states, but, uh...
They're using the classrooms at Johnson and the classrooms at Virgo are being used for their office space.
Oh.
It's just office space on the third floor at Virgo is all it is.
Okay. All right. That's what I wanted -- okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item V. Renewal of Errors and Omissions General Liability Insurance with North Carolina School Boards Trust Appendix V. Bill Hance.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chairman requested the Board approve the errors and omissions general liability with School Boards Trust renewal.
Move for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item W. Renewal of Auto and Garage Liability Insurance with Risk Management Appendix C. Mr. Hance.
Move for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item X. North Carolina Education Lottery Applications for 2013-2014 Capital Construction Projects Appendix D. Mr. Hance.
Move for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I looked at what was in here, and I'm trying to grasp exactly what are we asking for. I mean, I understand we're asking for lottery money, but, I mean, recommended approval of application for the following projects, and then there's like 10 or 12 projects. Is this just kind of a boilerplate? These are the projects?
These are the projects that were approved in your capital budget, in your work session capital budget for 2013-2014. These are just -- this is just the application. We're going through the application process, make these applications to the county for these particular projects. That's what it's for.
Okay, so we have to apply -- I understand we have to apply to the county to get the money, 'cause they -- it all funnels through them, but it's not necessarily we're applying for projects. We're just simply saying, these are the primary projects that we want to do, and we're saying we're asking to be able to use lottery money. We're not necessarily asking for lottery money for a specific purpose. Is that correct?
These are specific projects that you approved.
Right.
And we're asking for applications for lottery dollars for these projects.
But we're not asking for like $75,000 for Williston Middle School. We're asking -- we're saying that Williston Middle School is on our capital list, and we would like to be able to use lottery money to do that. Is that correct?
You approved the list of specific projects as part of the capital process.
It's specific.
Now, the second phase of that is that the county commissioners, since we're using lottery dollars, has to approve our list. So at the previous meeting, we listed the projects that are up there. They had a dollar amount attached to them.
Okay.
So the county -- the second phase of that process is that we go to the county commissioners and say, we approved this list. We need you to approve this list as well.
And just for clarification, after the county commissioners approve them, then they'll go to the Department of Public Instruction for approval.
Right.
Before any money can be allotted.
It's a multi-state -- multi-step process for the...
Well, I understand that. I'm just trying to get a clarification that this is not actually a request for money for these -- for a specific amount of money for a specific project. It is a request to include all of these projects as potentially being funded out of lottery money.
Each project is funded separately, so that, you know, one could be accepted and one could be turned down. So it's not -- it's not a list...
So what is a specific request associated with a dollar amount?
A dollar amount per project.
Per project. It is very specific.
And many of them will be allotted a design portion and then a construction portion. It's that detailed at the state level.
Yes.
Then how come it's not listed?
Because you've already approved the amounts associated with these projects as part of our capital.
Well, shouldn't it be l -- okay. I don't think I'm making myself clear, but, you know, I think in my own mind, I understand what's happening. I don't have a problem with it. I'm just trying to get a transparency, a clarity of the fact that Williston Middle School Mechanical Room renovation, if that's $45,000, I mean, we're gonna get, I think we estimated, what, $1.000 some million dollars out of lottery?
Approximately.
1.3, 1.4, something like that.
I think we budgeted for $3 million.
We're gonna get $3 million?
For next year. Three.
All right. So we're gonna get $3 million, and of that, what I guess I'm -- I was asking is, you know, if I go down here to this secondary list, I got Williston, well, all schools, automatic locks and bells for main entrances. $210,000, okay. Is that what goes next to -- oh, God, what's the word? Star or the -- what do you call those dots?
Aster.
Well, it's not an asterisk. Next to all school security improvements at main entrance. That's $210,000 is what we're asking for?
It's a burger point.
That's -- that's on the application that you're talking about.
Okay. That's what I'm trying to get clear. Okay.
So specifically, to make it crystal clear, hopefully, they could potentially approve HVAC improvements at Williston in the amount of $155,000, but turn down asbestos remediation at Williston in the amount of $44,000.
Correct.
So every specific request we have is a specific line item with a dollar amount associated with, and the commissioners could turn it down, or DPI could turn it down.
They could.
And they can approve specific ones and reject other ones.
And that's -- and that's these 28 you've got listed on that...
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's all I'm trying to -- I'm trying to get clear of the understanding. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Of course, if pending legislation on the state level were to pass, this might be a moot point in the future, because the county commissioners might be taking care of the schools and ownership.
Hush your mouth, boy.
Well, that bill only affects 10 counties right now. We're not one of the 10.
Just 10 counties that would affect?
Yes.
Okay. Item Y. NC SBA Board Training Credit Appendix E.
Move for approval?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item 11. Call to the audience, non-agenda items, and we appreciate your patience in hanging here with us tonight. First person to sign up, Steve Nix.
My name's Steve Nix, and I hope to be a resident of Anchor's Bend in the near future. I just want to make a few comments on past discussion points and statements from board meetings regarding Ogden Elementary and Anchor's Bend. I've heard this issue affects 22 developments, and therefore, any deviation from the recorded November 2008 minutes must include all of the developments or none of the developments. I understand the need for the Board to maintain comprehensive and consistent policies where possible, but consider the following. Nine of the developments mentioned are within the Ogden District, and 13 are in the Blair District. It is my understanding that Blair is not only overcrowded from a class size perspective, but also from a fire code perspective. Since the halls are narrow at Blair, fire code prohibits admitting any students beyond the current count. Ogden is simply overcrowded. Of the nine Ogden developments, several don't even have streets or utilities currently, let alone a house, so actual development impact on schools is far into the future. Of the few Ogden developments that have infrastructure or homes, only one was under construction prior to November 2008, Anchor's Bend. According to county records, three homes were under construction as of November 2008, and one of those was issued a CO on December 3, 2008. So of the 22 developments, in reality, only one could be modified while still adhering to the letter of the law of the original November 2008 minutes and current fire codes, and only one could be modified with minimal impact to the desired school, Anchor's Bend. By the time Anchor's Bend growth creates meaningful impact to Ogden, a new school will exist in Porter's Net. Think about the original decision and some of the impacts. I would imagine that the 2008 decision was made in the face of tremendous projected growth within the Ogden District. In reality, that growth has been muted by economic conditions over the last five years. Given that Ogden has actually had student populations in the 700s in the past, the current count of 689 students would suggest a trend of slow to no growth with the current districting. Personally, the only issue I have is being forced to choose between one of two bad options on a daily basis because of where I choose to live. Either wake my family at 5:00 a.m. so that my kindergartner can catch a school bus and ride for an hour, or an hour and a half to Castle Hayne Elementary, only to endure the same on the return from school, or drive 60 miles every day to get my child to and from school to save unproductive bus time. 60 miles is $32 a day at current IRS mileage expense rates. $32 a day is $160 a week, and $160 a week is at least $640 a month. Of course, that's only for nine months each year. That's almost $6,000 just to get a kindergartner to school each year. In any case, it is either wasted time for my son, possibly having an impact on his educational development, and wasted money for the county for a long bus ride, or it is wasted money for his parents, all while a viable option is two miles.
Mr. Nix, your three minutes has passed. If you would, if you could wrap it up, please.
Okay. The final item I want to reflect on is a comment that was made in the last school board meeting. The Ogden playground is already too small, is what was said. My immediate thought at that instant was memories of playing kickball at Talston on a small parking lot bordering Fifth Street because we had no playground, or sitting in a classroom at Williston with no air conditioning at 96 degrees. The playground didn't really matter, and neither did the air temp in the end, but why? Because I came to school well rested after a reasonable bus ride and had great teachers.
Mr. Nix, you really need to wrap it up. You're approaching four minutes, please.
And those great teachers made the facilities almost meaningless and prepared me for college at Princeton. My main point here is the hope that educators stay focused on what is truly important when designing policy and making decisions for the youngest of students. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, and I would remind speakers that really, we have a three-minute time limit. If you would please try to adhere to that, we'd appreciate it. Next speaker, Shannon Hutchinson.
Dr. Markley and members of the Board, I'm Shannon Hutchinson, and I represent my family and the community of Anchor's Bend on Middle Sound Loop Road. We've been asking the Board to redistrict Anchor's Bend to its original assignment of Ogden Elementary for multiple reasons and have provided realistic solutions. The latest communication we received about the request was from the superintendent's administrative assistant, who left me a voicemail on 5/24. The voicemail said, "The superintendent's discussed Anchor's Bend. There will be no changes to the school assignment for next year, and probably not until a new school is built, which will be at least another three to four years." I was disappointed about this message for many reasons. I would hope a decision about an issue of this magnitude would be communicated directly, not via voicemail. After multiple attempts and requests to meet with the Board and superintendent to discuss solutions, no one has met with us, and we have no formal communications to the Anchor's Bend community. In three or four years, my children will be in middle school. Elementary school is a critical time in a child's life. I can't allow them to sit on a bus for two to three hours a day, because the people we elected to manage the schools are not able to come up with a short-term solution. At the last board meeting, the Board stated, "If we change the assignment for one satellite neighborhood, we have to change it for all." You don't have to change it for everyone, because everyone is not like Anchor's Bend. You're the Board of Education. You can choose to redistrict Anchor's Bend now on these facts. Anchor's Bend is not like the other neighborhoods. It was in existence and under construction prior to the November 2008 vote to assign developments that quote the minutes not -- were not currently under construction to Castle Hayne. Anchor's Bend is the farthest satellite neighborhood from Castle Hayne, and only 10 children from Anchor's Bend need space at Ogden next year. All elementary schools in New Hanover County are overcrowded. If you're gonna overcrow a school with 10 children from Anchor's Bend, at least have them attend their neighborhood school. Only nine of the 22 satellite neighborhoods are in the Ogden School District. Past minutes document that the Board acknowledging that mobile units are the only short-term solution until a long-term solution is available. Mobile units are being provided for Wrightsville Beach in a less-than-desirable environment, and the church is being rented for over $2,000 a month. I hate to come to the board meeting every month and speak about challenges Anchor's Bend is facing with no response, but I would hate myself even more if I stood aside and did nothing. We are respectfully requesting a realistic solution now. We elected you to represent our neighborhood schools, to protect our children, and to work for our families, not to say we'll have to wait and see what happens when and if a new school's built in three or four years.
Next speaker, Lisa Warlick.
Mine's rather short. Good evening, Dr. Markley and members of the Board. My name is Lisa Warlick, and I'm a future resident of Anchor's Bend. I'm here tonight to ask you to reconsider your decision to move Anchor's Bend out of Ogden, out of the Ogden School District. I'm very concerned about my seven-year-old son attending Castle Hayne and the negative impact this will have on his future. After speaking with the transportation supervisor, he said in order to have a bus from Anchor's Bend to Castle Hayne in time for school, the pickup time would be 6:00 a.m., and the route would be approximately an hour and a half one way. Since I want my son to be a productive student, waking him at 5:00 a.m. and having him ready for the bus is not an option. The other option is to drive him. I have a husband who travels and two middle-school-aged children. If I have to drive to Castle Hayne, I would have to leave by 7:15, which is 30 miles round trip or 60 miles a day. The major dilemma is that my two middle-school children are districted to attend Noble Middle School, the opposite direction of Castle Hayne. The middle-school bus arrives at 7:45, so I would need to leave my children unsupervised to get ready for school and get to the bus stop every day on their own. I am not comfortable with this situation, for obvious reasons. Please help us understand the logic to sending Anchor's Bend to an elementary school in one part of the county and a middle school in the other. I chose Anchor's Bend assuming my son would continue at Ogden. Every time I go or leave Anchor's Bend, I pass Ogden Elementary. It makes no sense to send any of the children from Middle Sound Loop anywhere else. My husband and I have sent several emails to the Board with no -- with little response. I am very disappointed with the lack of communication and the unwillingness to find a short-term solution. It seems as though the Board is dictating the future growth in the area and motivated by something other than what makes sense and what is best for all the children in New Hanover County. I understand the challenges the Board faces, but Anchor's Bend was a neighborhood under construction when it was mistakenly taken out of Ogden School District. Therefore, it should be placed back in. Other satellite neighborhoods were not under construction, and most of these neighborhoods still do not even have roads today. Thank you.
Next speaker, Jennifer Byrd. Was I correct on your last name?
Yes, Jennifer Edge. It's Jennifer Edge. It's a -- it was a...
Edge?
Edge. E-D-G-E.
I can see the B, U, and D, but I can't -- I thought that was an R.
It's okay. It was an error.
I didn't want to mispronounce your name. Thank you.
Okay. I hope that doesn't take away from my time.
No, no.
Dear Superintendent and Honorable Members of the Board, my name is Jennifer Edge, and I would like to thank you for your time in hearing me today. I am the mother of a three-and-a-half-year-old girl, Catherine, and a resident of Anchor's Bend, a neighborhood in the Middle Sound Loop Road area of Ogden. I'm here to speak to the matter of our current school district. Anchor's Bend, my neighborhood, was under construction starting in 2007. My brother-in-law, Bart Edge, and my husband, Mike, were developing Anchor's Bend. Close as I was to them, I was witness to the many stages of development of our neighborhood. The neighborhood's infrastructure was developed in 2007 with paved roads, landscaping, road signs, lot signs, and utilities going in. Intricosa Realty set up a trailer in Anchor's Bend, selling lots to builders and potential home buyers. My brother-in-law, Bart, sold the first home lot to Allen Neview in January of 2008. The home construction plans were approved in February. Building permit was issued in March, and home construction started immediately thereafter. The home was construction constructed in the Preserve of Anchor's Bend, the first subdivision of Anchor's Bend. It was completed at the end of November. Two additional homes were also under construction in 2008. On November 20th, the school board made crucial changes to the districting of neighborhoods in the Ogden and Blair School Districts. In 2008 at that time, neighborhoods that were not currently under construction were voted on by the Board to attend Castle Hayne Elementary School instead of Ogden. Those neighborhoods appear as satellite neighborhoods on the map known as Option 9. This map was voted on to serve as the official guideline for districting of those neighborhoods, those that would attend Ogden and those satellites that would attend Castle Hayne. Somehow, Anchor's Bend was designated as a satellite and was districted not for Ogden, but for Castle Hayne. What is confusing is how this could have happened. According to the minutes of the school board's work session, a motion was made to adopt this map, and that any subdivision not under construction as of 11/20/2008 in the Ogden and Blair Districts would be assigned to the new school on Holly Shelter. There was a vote to adopt the map, but clearly, Anchor's Bend would not qualify as a neighborhood to be slated for Castle Hayne. It was definitely under construction. Construction started in 2007 and was ongoing with a home in place when this decision was made on November 20th, 2008. Perhaps other satellites in the Option 9 map would qualify as not under construction, but that was not the case for Anchor's Bend. I was not aware of the redistricting effort that took place back then. Had I been, I would have been present, ensuring that the redistricting committee knew the facts about Anchor's Bend. I would have advocated for our neighborhood and ensured that the school board had the proper facts about Anchor's Bend and its presence as an established neighborhood. I'm here now to state that our neighborhood has a valid place at Ogden Elementary School. Our neighborhood children should be at Ogden just as much as any other neighborhood children in the Ogden School District. I understand the population issues at Ogden, and that Ogden's school situation is like many other schools in New Hanover County. I ask that you give consideration to our children and provide them the right to attend their neighborhood school. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 12. Any correspondence? Any board members who'd like to share?
Just a text from Ms. Eastep. She's gone on to the hospital with Jan, and she'll let us know if there's any updates.
Thank you.
Any other correspondence?
Would you text her back and let her -- ask her to please let us know later tonight?
Yes.
And we want to thank Ms. Edge for helping with Ms. Eastep. Both of you, thank you.
Under item 13, announcements. Thursday this week, excuse me, June the 6th is the Educated Year banquet at Ashley High School in the cafeteria.
Are spouses allowed to do that or not?
No.
I won't be there. I'm actually on call that night.
You will be sorely missed.
You'll have better dinner than I will.
Okay. Item B. The Mosley Performance Learning Center graduation will be Friday night, June 7th at 7:00 p.m. Mini Evans Art Center. The real big ones, All Day Affair, graduation ceremonies Saturday, June 8th, Tras Coliseum. We will have Ashley at 9:00, Hogard at 12:30, New Hanover at 4:00, and Laney at 7:30. So bring a book to read. We'll be there all day. Item D. The New Hanover County Board of Education will meet and close session on Wednesday, June 19th. Well, the Thursday, June 20th has been...
It's been canceled.
Okay. That has been canceled. We were able to combine all of those appeals to one day, but it will be a long day on Thursday, the night -- excuse me, Wednesday, the 19th. The 20th has been canceled. Hearing will begin at 8:00, and also on the 19th, don't we have a short closed session after...
Not closed, but just a very quick, if the county approves their budget, then we'll bring you that final budget recommendation.
That'll be after the hearings on the 19th. And item E. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, June 2nd at 5:30. Any other announcements anyone cares to make?
Yes, there'll be a policy committee meeting before the Board of Education meeting, but I'm not sure what time.
It's on June 2nd.
On the 2nd of July, yes, depending on the number of policies that we receive, but we know we have two right now that we'll be addressing.
I just got a text update. She is doing well, and her husband has arrived, so I think she's coming back here.
Okay.
Not in Skogul, but let me pick it up.
Oh, I was gonna say.
Okay. Item 14 is we need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31811, A1 and 115C402. Is that correct, Mr. Bullard? Anything I need?
Circa.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Thank you. We are in closed session. Thank you. Oh, we have a motion in a second. Thank you. We are in closed session. Thank you.